Everybody get ready. Please. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 6, 2019, meeting of the Planning Commission. We're going to slightly deviate from -- well, we're going to deviate from the agenda in a few minutes, but first, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So the agenda ordinarily right here would be, we approve the minutes and things like that. Because as a courtesy, I want to get this first issue out, and it's about Wawa, in case we are not necessarily proceeding the way you think we're going to proceed. The legal issue that was raised last month continues. A memo came from applicants' counsel on the 3rd of May, and yesterday, another memo came out from township's solicitor, Mary, who's here tonight. Their positions are opposed. They continue to be opposed. It puts us here on the Planning Commission in the position of sort of judge and jury, and I don't believe that we're qualified to be judge and jury on a zoning question. I'd like to have comments from other members of the Planning Commission before we take action, but speaking just personally momentarily, I think that we're not going to do the substance of the application tonight. But I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
I concur with you. I just, just reading both memos, it seems like you're having two legal opinions, and they're differing. And for us as a body, I don't know how we can apply.
I'm in agreement. Clearly, there's a zoning issue that I don't think it's our position to sort out.
I'm in agreement also.
Being the commission, we, our job is merely recommendations. We don't necessarily make decisions. Reading, and I've read these a lot, probably more than I've read anything I've read over the years, it really is a puzzlement, to quote Gil Brenner. The only thing I kind of, I kind of feel after reading everything, that the biggest issue here is, I think that the structural portion of this, that a retail can be placed on that site. That's just my opinion. The real issue here, I believe, is the gas pumps. And where I kind of hang my hat on this, the issue here, is on 280 101A1, where I think that it has to go in front of the zoning board, because the change is enough that the only way it can be, that they could have, they don't necessarily grant legally, it would be the fact that it wouldn't change any, any use that would be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think the traffic issue would be the big thing that would be detrimental as to what's there now, and it's non-conforming gas thing. So I would, I guess my position would be to decline it and have them go in front of zoning and look for a variance or a special accession due to 280 101A1. That's my opinion.
I would agree that probably the zoning issue is something that we're not qualified to make a decision on. I just wonder, this being the second time that this has come before us, is there any, any of the other things that we can comment on and move forward before that happens?
I think that that, it's a, it's sort of like going to college or law school or whatever. You have to meet a certain threshold that has to be satisfied. I think the zoning issue is the threshold. And I, I read Mary's document and Nick's document, and they just disagree. And there's a third party that has to come in here and decide who's right. And it may be that we will get to do all those things with the plans in the near future or the future, at any event. But my recommendation is that we ask the applicant which way they want to proceed based on the premise that we could either table it so they could go to zoning, or we could deny it so they could go to the BOC.
Get this way, Nick, you got in early.
Thanks, Skip. No, that's not, yeah.
No, no, I said you got, you got to start early. You probably thought you were going to be here late.
So, my feeling is let's move forward. You know, we're not in favor of tabling it. We want to proceed with it. So we would prefer this evening that you make your recommendation or lack of recommendation or whatever, and just push it forward to the Board of Commissioners.
Mary, did you want to make any comment? Because you haven't had an opportunity.
The only comment that I would make is, the issue seems to be, what do you do? Feeling that there is a legal issue and you're not qualified to decide on the legal issue, the question is whether you make a recommendation that they go to the zoning hearing board or you make a recommendation for denial. I think you have to make a recommendation for denial, because the MPC requires that the Board of Commissioners act on the plan, not just make a recommendation to go somewhere else with the plan.
So, what we need is a motion. I think it'd be great if Charlie would make it, since he has all those zoning years, to deny based on the fact that we believe that the matter, I guess, should go to, or you can say what you think is best, but that the matter should go before zoning before it comes before us.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend a denial of the applicants to build a Wawa on two tax parcels due to, due to the issue of zoning discrepancies as well. And therefore, they should go in front of the Commissioners to reevaluate the plan and see how they would like to proceed on the issues that are before us.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the plan is denied, and we encourage you to do what you need to do, but we can't do any more for you tonight. For, I, I, I'm doing that on behalf of the audience as well, because I'm anticipating that 80 or 90% are here for Wawa. Maybe 100%. And I didn't want you to listen to two valuable but very unrelated matters and then find out that you would stop for a half an hour to go home. So please, stay or go, and thank you for coming.
Steve, or someone on staff? Do you want us to keep these drawings? Or do you think we should, they're going to get redone? Or how do you want us to do with this stuff?
I would hold on to them. Let's see what happens. We'll just take it from there. If you, if you don't wish to hold on to them and they're back before us, we'll have them provide new copies. So it's your call. If you wish to hold them, if not, you can just pile them up here. We'll recycle them when you leave.
Okay.
Okay. We'll wait a moment for everybody to make their moves. And then, in the meantime, has everyone had an opportunity to read last month's minutes?
I, I read them, and I sent some corrections. I assume she made those corrections, because that whole thing is gone. I, I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First item on the agenda, and I only delayed you 10 minutes, so. That is 360 Conestoga Road, minor final subdivision plans.
I believe it's, it is, yeah. Andy Eberwine with Edward B. Washington Associates. We were here last month, and we were tabled, because there were some typos and things that needed to be cleaned up, cleaned up on the plan. We made those revisions, got the plans back to the township, got letters from your engineers and consultants. And pretty much, I think they're clean letters now. We'll comply with any, all the items in these letters. I don't believe there are any other outstanding issues. And I would ask that you would consider this for a recommendation of approval.
Okay, well, I'll make sure that you get up before we, okay. Does staff have any comments about the revised plan?
Mr. Kunda, so when Mr. Cunilla comes in, there was the issue of a drainage easement or, or something at the rear of the property. I'd like Mr. Cunilla to address that when he returns in.
For Wawa?
No, for 360.
Oh, for 360, I'm sorry.
There were two issues that showed on the title report that are probably nothing, but we couldn't confirm that they were nothing based on the information provided. One was about the, any rights in the railroad behind the property, which I think we probably, pretty much resolved by the fact that there's a bike trail there, and the township owns it. The other was restrictions set forth at a certain deed book and page number, but there was no description of the restrictions. So.
So, and Nick is going to address that? Or comment on that, or?
I hope so, as soon as he gets back in here, sir.
Whoever, whoever did the title search certainly pulled those documents, but they're not usually included when the title report goes out to the customer. So we would just ask that the searcher provide those documents.
Why don't we go on to the next one? Hard if we go to the next person until Skip comes back in, is that it? Or, okay. Okay. Why don't we do that, instead of waiting? Because he may be out there a while.
All right. Then now we're going to look then at 501 South Eithen, a lot line adjustment plan.
We submitted the plan.
Can you identify yourself?
Pardon?
Would you identify yourself?
My name is Brian McDevitt. I'm the owner of 501 South Eithen.
Okay.
We've submitted the plan. We believe it meets with the requirements, and would just simply ask for the courts, or the Planning Commission's approval.
Okay. This is described as a lot line adjustment. But some of the requirements in your letters seem to suggest it was close to, like, a subdivision. Is that, do we have to do all that?
Yeah, it's, it's not a lot line adjustment. It's a, it's a subdivision. It's, it's revising a lot line, but it's not, in the, in the terms, a lot line adjustment. It's, it's one property selling a piece of property to another property.
Okay. Has the applicant met your requirements on this?
I have the review letter in front of me, and there's a few housekeeping comments. I would be comfortable with a recommendation of conditional approval based on addressing my letter and Amy's letter.
And I did promise the next door neighbor an opportunity to speak as well.
This is a different property.
That's what happens when you play with the agenda, I guess. That's my fault. Okay. So are you, Mr. McDevitt, is, are you commenting on this or the next plan?
No, the next door.
Okay. All right, okay. All right, are there any comments from the Commissioners, Planning Commissioners?
The, the plan that we have, are these supposed to, aren't these supposed to be signed and sealed by an engineer?
They will be at completion before recording.
But who, how was this one prepared? It's, I'm a little puzzled from looking at this drawing, what exactly you're doing, so it's.
I purchased about a quarter of an acre from the adjoining.
Can you put your plan down and show us on the?
I, this is my property, runs along here. I purchased this parcel right there, just to join it, to square up this, the selling.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
The parcel that I'm purchasing, my property extends back here. It's a very small parcel. And the piece that I'm acquiring is, comes along and just goes straight across to try to square up the selling parcel and to add a little bit to make mine closer to a conforming lot size. That's all. There's, there's no, nothing but land and trees in between.
You're, you're buying the Z parcel, correct?
Yeah, this piece right here.
Yeah, the Z parcel.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's already structures on both lots, so.
There, there's a, a house existing, has been for a long time. And my property was originally existing 200 years ago. Just a very small parcel.
And right now, there's a, you have ingress, ingress on South Eithen, on, until you're existing?
Yes.
Trying to picture it, because I live, I grew up right around the corner from you.
It's a, it's a stone, little tiny stone house, close to the road. If you know where Bascoms live.
Yeah.
It's next door to Bascoms.
Right on the left-hand side. Oh, the, the very small one. Okay, I know which house.
If you were looking at Bascoms main, the parents' house.
Yeah.
Mine's on the left.
Got it. Immediate one, the small one.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make it a little bit larger.
And what's your intention afterwards?
Just to enjoy it, improve it, make it a little bit more usable. At some point, I'd like to expand the, the house and garage at some point, but time and money.
Who owns the, who owns this parcel now? Is it the Bascoms?
The parcel that's being sold is owned by Vigiani. That's up above.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I know the Vigianos. Okay.
Is there any public comment on this? No. All the public is outside now. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I move we accept the plan as presented with modifications that staff suggested be done.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous?
Thank you very much.
How long have you lived there?
I bought it in 1988.
1988, okay.
Thank you.
What do we, can we possibly ask Nick to address this and then go back to his meeting? I think so.
Mr. Cunilla, there was one, I misspoke on the drainage. It was about the railroad slash trail behind you.
I'm not involved in this, but, you know, we actually talked, Mary and Steve, the other day, because I heard a similar situation. The bike trail is owned by PennDOT. Radnor leases it, is my understanding, the bike trail. So it's actually a fee ownership. It's not a right of way or anything like that. It's actually owned by PennDOT. Used to be the P&amp;W, the Philadelphia and Western. Charlie and I are probably the only ones that remember that, when it was called the P&amp;W. But it's, it's a fee ownership. As a matter of fact, the deed, I just grabbed the deed, and it refers to the northeasterly line of the P&amp;W Railway, is what the deed is. So they have no ownership interest on that area, which I think there was a restriction in there regarding the.
And after we talked last week and looked at Google Earth together, I felt, much in your, your historical knowledge of the, of the area, I felt very comfortable with that. There was another restriction in the title report. Restrictions in deed book pay, deed book 544, page 296, but omitting any restrictions based on age, color, sex, race, handicap. That, I'm sure that that, that could just be a condition of approval. I'm sure that that came along in the stack of things with the title report. We just need to see what it is.
Is it, was it included? Did you see, Mayor?
It wasn't included in the fact that it's being requested that. We provide that, and we certainly will. Mrs. Rousher has talked to the title search company to get a copy of that, and we will get that to your solicitor. It's not an issue.
Mr. Phillips just told me that he tried to pull that deed book and page number, and it's blank. So it's, it's just a little mystery that has to be unraveled. I'm sure it'll get done before it goes to the Board of Commissioners.
But it was a discrim, the standard discrimination one, can't discriminate against.
Right.
Which is the law now, anyway, so.
But it should remain as, as one of your conditions of approval, that that, we resolve that as part of plan approval.
That was all news to me. Again, as, as I suggested, said, we are, you know, I believe we, we met your engineers' requirements. We're going to ask you for consideration of approval. I understand the general wants to speak, and I think I'm going to acquiesce the floor to him if it's all right with you. So I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Hi, I'm Bill Philip. I missed the last meeting. I was out of town in business. I did ask the, met with one of the county, the, the lead engineer or whatever, and he said to write a letter. I didn't see this, this included in any of the notes that my letter had been received or written.
I, I, we've seen your letter.
Okay, it was, there was nothing in here that says that it was on there.
Mr. Philip, that was in the last packet, your email? The one you sent to me?
No, I'm just, I'm coming out of the notes. In the cupboard, it talks about everyone who has, who has presented with these different letters. I didn't see that in there, so I was just wondering if that was concerned. So I'm immediately next to the property. Obviously, I have no problem with it being developed in a correct and, you know, safe way. We have, this is a very weird topography. I'm significantly, all of my, my structure, my buildings are below, way, way below the grade there. There, I think there's an old dilapidated, like, clay tennis court or something that's up there. Even just the, the dividing line is, you know, several feet in many areas. So we already have major water runoff issues. I deal with a lot of water issues. I spend a lot of money trying to move the stuff around. Still, really, is not great. So I have, I would like to make sure that before anything moves forward, there's an adequate water study done, because I'm not going to, I don't, I'm not going to tolerate, like, after the fact, water issues when we need to study, and make sure that's correctly managed. When I talk about extreme water, I mean, this is right on the road on Conestoga. I'm right by the, by the, that very busy five-corner intersection right up the street. You know, when we get these big waters, and if it's cold, the stuff freezes. I know it's the state road there that's supposed to keep the drainage. They're always clogged. So across the board, we have water issues on this. So I'd like to make sure I understand the process and that. I didn't see anywhere in here from this Gilmore Group or whatever, where a water study was conducted, and so has that been done?
Yeah. Staff can answer this, but typically, that wouldn't be done at this point. In other words, this is a subdivision. It's not a land development application.
Okay. So when would that get done?
If and when they want to develop.
Okay.
I mean theoretically, they don't have to develop. They could just subdivide.
Is that, is that the plan, is to subdivide but not?
They probably want to develop.
Why would we, why would we be subdividing if they're not developing? I just, again, we're neighbors. I'd like to be friendly on this, but.
We're not proposing any house management on the property right now. When the house gets constructed, we have to do a storm.
So why are we here?
We have to do a, to subdivide the land. We have to submit a review.
For what reason?
So they can build a house on it.
Okay, that's what I just said.
I didn't, I didn't answer no. I'm trying to explain when the storm order is going to get done. It will get done when we submit the building permit plan for the house to the township. And the township's engineer will review the storm order in accordance with their ordinances and, and your letter, which I didn't see. And we'll, we make sure you don't get any additional water. In fact, it'll be reduced.
That writing, that'd be great.
Well, it's part of the rules. I mean, I have to follow the Radnor Township Code, and Radnor Township Code would do that.
Well, and I have a number of other issues. The, the access to the property. I mean, if you guys remember where that is, it's really high. I'm trying to think how in heck they put in a driveway into that. So I'm really curious where that driveway would be positioned.
Excuse me. Here's what you have to understand. This is, when, when he comes to build something on this property and make an improvement on it, he will be back in front of us. He will have to devise a plan. So at that point, you know, and you'll see exactly what they propose to do, that's, that's when you have to come up and either agree or disagree with it.
Okay, great.
We can't answer those questions now, because that's not what's in front of us.
If I may interject, I'm, I'm sorry, if I may interject, when the applicant comes back to build, they won't be before this commission. It's going to be done through a grading permit. So a grading permit does not go before Planning Commission. It may go before the Shade Tree Commission, but that's not, that's approved administratively. But the applicant's engineer is correct. Stormwater management is addressed at the grading permit stage. So when they come in and wish to build something, they apply for a grading permit, and that's when all the stormwater and other things are addressed.
Okay.
Steve, I'm sorry. Steve, the driveway access issue that this is being brought up.
Yes, sir. That also.
Is that a PennDOT?
They'll need, and it's noted, they're going to need a PennDOT highway occupancy permit to do that.
So PennDOT weighs in on the location of the driveway too?
Okay. Well, I mean, I'll, now that I'm more involved, I'll, I'll be able to figure out if I need to hire a lawyer or whatever. But, but I would like that the property line that I have, what I can sort of discern, but again, because the property is such, I mean, the topography is really crazy right there. I really can't see where they're saying the property line is. And, you know, I've done a lot of work along there, and I did my best from the prior owner, kind of did a description of where it was. And you can kind of see from where the structures were. You know, there used to be a connection between my property and this tennis court. There's these steps. So you can kind of tell where you think the lot line is. But from all I can tell, there's, there's maybe one stake in the very beginning at the, at the road level, and one way in the back. Along the way, I can't tell what the heck's going on. So I'd ask someone, I guess, maybe can, can come out and, you know, identify the, the clear line of sight.
Yeah. The applicant may have had a survey done. Did you have a survey done? So they actually know where the line is?
Yeah, I can't see from there. And what I saw in here didn't look accurate to me. So I'd like, I'd like, if they can just come out and put, put the stakes the entire way, so I can see what they're saying, that would be great.
No, you don't have to do that.
I don't think that it's accurate. So from my layman's view of the plan, it didn't look accurate.
The self-help remedy, it's not a township issue, exactly.
Okay, well, I would say.
Would be that you would have to get a surveyor.
The way, the way it's on there, and from my understanding, and having lived there for 10 years or whatever, it's incorrect.
Well, we're not able to review the position of the line, except to the extent that it's on the plan. In other words, we, we're to a certain.
I'm just telling you that, from my experience, having lived there, and my, you know.
You have the ability to disprove it. You were talking moments ago about hiring a lawyer, but maybe all you really need is a surveyor to run one line.
Look, I don't think I should have to be the one airing that clause. I mean, they're, they want to change something, they'll tell people.
They, they have warned that clause to run the line, but you disagree with their line, is what I meant.
I disagree with the line. I can't see, I can't see it. You want to walk out there and show me that this, there's nowhere? There's two points, there's two points. You can't see.
Mr. Eberwine, could you please step up?
You can't tell.
It's wrong. It's wrong.
I don't believe it's wrong. I believe it was done.
It's wrong. I live there, it's wrong.
And you do have the ability to remedy the situation through an attorney you are surveying challenged, and that's your priority.
Then I'd ask that we delay it until I'm able to get a law firm involved.
We have found, we found, my surveyors were out there, physically found evidence tied to the deeds, and physically found evidence along your property on it. There's an iron pin in the back and a rebar on line in front. And we established your survey based upon existing evidence. It's protocol, and any surveyor, any licensed surveyors are doing this. So they believe that they are correct.
Okay, I believe they're incorrect. I'd like to know where the lot line, where is this here?
So the pins are here.
Yeah, pins are here. All of this in between here? I'd like to know really where it is. Like, you're down here, you cannot stand here and see that.
Excuse me. I, I think if you disagree with them, I think you're going to have to get a surveyor and survey it on your own. They, they. get a surveyor and survey it on your own, they, they paid their surveyor, if you don't think their surveyor's right, then it's up to you, if you would like, but I, I would suggest you wait until they say they're going to build something, because there's really no issue now at all.
When are you guys going to build on the property?
They don't have to answer that.
We're really out there, we have, we're coming to subdivide, we'd like to get this completed, and we'll make our decisions as to how we.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll interpret that they're going to do this.
We've been there for 23 years.
Oh, great, we've been neighbors for ten, that's great, so, so I, I would just like to know what's.
And if there's concerns, you know, I'm happy to work with you if that's what you want to do.
If, if I need to hire one, I'll hire one, I'd like some time to be able to get a lawyer, and I'd like a time to get a, my own surveyor.
The prob, the problem from the townships.
I'd ask for time for that.
I'm sorry. The, the difficulty from the township's standpoint is that there are time constraints that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners has to live under in reviewing and approving plans, so what you're talking about, that property line between yourself and, and the applicant, that's not going to change, it is what it is, either you're right or they're right, but that is not going to be affected by the grant of approval or the denial of approval. So I wouldn't recommend that the Planning Commission delay in this.
Just, I'll tell you what I'll do then, I'll hire an attorney, I'll hire a land surveyor, whatever, I'll report down next time, if they're wrong, I would like, obviously we want to have the right lot line presented.
Again, the Planning Commission is an advisory body in the first place, and secondarily, we don't have the power to adjudicate between your expert and their expert.
Okay, well, I'm, just tell me what I'm doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, if, depending on what occurs here, if this moves on to the Board of Commissioners, you would have that time and ability to, to bring whatever you found. I would like to ask the applicant one thing, Mr. Phillips brought up a tree near the property line that's on the, the property being subdivided, our arborist, as a courtesy, did view it and deemed it hazardous, so I request that, that tree be, if I could get from the applicant that you would remove that tree before it causes any damage.
That's fine.
No, it's on her property.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, are there any board comments on the plan? Are there any public comments on the plan? And making sure I covered this base, but I'm not sure, Roger, are you satisfied with the corrections and amendments to the plan?
Yes, and I have a few items that are noted in my letter, and if you make your approval conditioned upon that, they'll, they will satisfy those final housekeeping items.
Can I have a motion from my fellow commissioners?
You can do it, somebody else do it, you guys got to learn how to do this.
With regard to the application for, what was it?
360.
It's 360 Conestoga Road.
Can you use your mic, please?
Guys, talk to your mic, so she can, she can record it.
I'm sorry, with regard to the application for subdivision, for final subdivision plans of 360 Conestoga Road, I submit for your approval.
The applicant, the applicant.
Based on the conditions set forth by staff, the restrictions and?
Yes, based, based upon staff's recommendations for minor cleanup comments with the plans.
And the addition or the removal, I don't, did you have it about the letter and, about the tree, or was that an addition?
Tree near the property.
Right, the addition of, removal of the tree.
And also removal of the tree.
Hazardous.
The hazardous tree.
And the recommendation of declaring of the restrictions on the title report.
Thank you.
As duly said.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Do we have any unrelated to any application public comment? Here's your chance. That could be you. I thought you're, you're not just here to watch all this fun.
Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road, the reason I'm here is, I was just wondering how you as a board operate relative to the comprehensive land use plan, I know that's been an issue, that's been, you know, the comprehensive land use plan and how it's evolved over time and how it's been interpreted over time has changed, and I know it's somewhat out of date, we've had many variances and exceptions regarding how it's being applied, and I would just think it would be helpful if perhaps the planning board might help residents understand how you interface with that, and also how you might help support any modifications you might see to update that.
Well, in my individual case, I only, I will only be on the board for another five or six months, or seven months, but it's my understanding that several members of the Planning Commission will probably be on a group that will be redoing the comprehensive plan, and I think that two of them are likely to be Liz and Matt, who are not here tonight. It is part of our charge that we are supposed to participate in that process, so I'm anticipating that we will. There was a motion or a discussion at the commissioner level that was looking for a way to go forward on that, and I'm not sure where that stands, but I would say that Matt and Liz are probably ready to go, or if they know where to go.
Thank you, that's very helpful, I appreciate your concern about this issue that affects all of us.
Do we have any other business, old business, new business?
I move we adjourn.
Second? We don't need a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.